We're going to open up this meeting. Welcome to the April 7th School Committee Meeting. This meeting is being usually done by Zoom and we are recording through East Hampton Media. And we want to thank East Hampton Media for working with us. Please bear with us if we have technical difficulties as this is our very first time we are doing it. And we will work out the glitches as time goes on. The first thing I'd like to do is really very quickly thank everybody. From our mayor to our medical workers, to our superintendent, to our teachers, to our first responders. There were so many people, grocery store workers, there were so many people working so hard. And I want everybody to know it's really appreciated. You are all keeping the city and school running, so thank you. I'm looking for public speak and see anyone for public speak. So I think that we should just continue on with the meeting. And I will turn it over to, I'm going to close public speak. Since no one's here, and I am going to open up the meeting to Dr. Leclerc. And we will begin about the proposed 2021 school budget.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I representing the 2021 East Hampton Public Schools Budget. To begin, I would like to thank and acknowledge members of the Finance Subcommittee, Chair Maren Goldstein, and members Cindy Kuzinski and Jonathan Schmidt. In addition, I'd like to thank our Business Director Dale Doran, who has worked with the committee and prepared all the documents, as well as our leadership team who reviewed and provided input on the budget process. And lastly, I'd like to thank Jen Galant, the City Treasurer, who attended many of our meetings to gain an understanding of the budget process. The School Department is unique within the city as the elected School Committee is charged with approving the budget that they feel is necessary to run the school before it moves to the city for approval. This year, the mayor directed the School Department to submit a 0% increase budget or level funded back in January. Level funded is different from level service. Level funded equates to the same dollar amount as the previous year, even though costs go up. So basically, in a level funded scenario, you're most likely going to need to reduce staff. So the service will not remain level from the previous year. That said, the Finance Subcommittee did request information on what a level service budget would equate to as they wanted to understand the difference, and we provided that. In addition to working with the Finance Subcommittee, School Building Administration reviewed budgets and adjusted or recommended changes based on need. We carefully reviewed staffing and student ratios, and every supply line was adjusted to reflect an accurate picture of our district need. Some adjustments that are made based on our review. Believe it or not, in a 0% budget, we did need to make a few additions to our budget. First and foremost, we were mandated to add a registered nurse to the district as we have been out of compliance per the Mass Department of Public Health for the last several years. We are reducing an LPN and replacing that position with an RN. We're fortunate that an LPN in the district has resigned effective March 2020, so no layoff is necessary. Due to increased enrollment at the middle school level, we're adding a sixth grade teacher to keep class size below 25 students per class. But on the opposite end, we're making some reductions in our budget. So in broad strokes, we are eliminating 1.6 FTE teachers due to decreased enrollment at different levels in the district. We're reducing 3.6 FTEs paraeducators due to a shift in enrollment and special needs. We are reducing supply and material lines in the areas of technology, diversity, special education, and high school supplies. And we've eliminated some clubs and extracurricular stipended positions throughout the district. In conclusion, the last few weeks have been unprecedented, and we're grateful to continue to pay our staff and keep our school district moving forward so effectively. We understand that many in our community are suffering, and we know that approving a budget and pondering what a new school year will look like still seems far off, but we appreciate your support as we move through this process. Thank you, and I'll let Dale have the floor to talk about a few specifics now. Dale?
So what I would start by saying is where we always start is with enrollment, as the superintendent indicated. And East Hampton has been very fortunate over the last five years in that we've had a five-year trend of modest enrollment growth over the period, which is really out of step with most other districts in the region that are experiencing, almost everybody is experiencing reductions in enrollment, and we continue to add students. We only expect, you know, projection, we only expect to add one student next year as compared to the total K through 12 enrollment this year. But another very important piece of our thinking about what we needed to do in terms of staffing is that the enrollment at the middle school will actually increase by around 37 students next year. And that's just a shift in enrollment. So when the superintendent talked about the need to add a teacher at Whitebrook, that's the very reason why they're going to have more students to serve next year. So as you've heard, the proposed budget that you have before you is level funded. It's exactly the same dollar amount as we have in the current year for next year. And I'm going to talk a little bit now about the process as to how we got to this level funded budget. As the superintendent mentioned, the Finance Subcommittee wanted to start from a level service budget to see what that looked like. And as she's explained, a level service budget is the same level of services next year as this year. Level funded is the same number of dollars. There's a significant difference there. And the level service budget that we put together reflected about a $217,000 increase. I think it was $217,371. And that was a 1.22% increase over the current budget this year. Normally, we would expect to see a level service budget from year to year increase in the vicinity of 2.5%. So you might ask why 1.22? And the reason there is that it's just by sort of luck of the draw. We have a good number of students receiving special ed services who will finish their secondary education this spring. And as a result, we were able to reduce the special ed budget by about $250,000 in fiscal year 21 as compared to the current year as a result of those kids aging out of services. So to comply with the direction of the, that was given to all the city departments, we were faced with cutting $217,000 out of the budget to get to a level funded budget. And as the superintendent outlined, what that meant in terms of reductions is 1.6 full-time equivalent professional positions, 3.6 full-time equivalent paraprofessional positions, about $20,000 in technology replacement, about $10,000 in diversity and equity work expenditures, $32,000 in materials, supplies, and services across the district, and $5,000 in advisor stipends and other stipends. So when we made all of those reductions, we were able to reduce the $217,371 and get to the level funded budget. Now, rather than to go into any further detail, I would be happy to answer any questions at this point in time about the budget packet that you received and/or any other questions that you have about the budget or the budget process.
Okay. Shannon? Hold on one second. There you go. Shannon, I think you're okay.
Hi Dale. I just have a question in regards to the choice in numbers for 2020. It looked like we had more students but less money coming in. What was that?
That's a really good question. So the way that school choice funding comes to us is we get a base amount of about $5,000 per pupil. But then if a student has special needs that require any special programming, there's money added on top of that $5,000 to cover some share of those expenditures. And my guess with that, without looking at a student-by-student basis, is that last year, we had more of those students that required special services, and this year, we have fewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Well, if you don't have any questions, are we ready to vote? Do we have a motion to accept this? Now, when we do this, everybody's going to have to unmute their mics. And you're going to roll call. I'll call on each one of you and ask you to state your name and your vote. And that way, we'll do a roll call vote. They have to vote for everything we do tonight.
Cindy, can I go ahead and just say something first before we go into actually voting on?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say, as the Finance Subcommittee Chair, I just wanted to offer a little bit of thoughts before we go into voting on this. It's, you know, I first want to start off that sort of acknowledging the process that Superintendent Leclerc and Business Manager, Business Director Dale Doran took us through. This has been a long process. This is not something that is done quickly. It's taken many months. I also want to give sort of acknowledgement out to the leadership team. I think particularly having two new principals this year, stepping into the budget process was really helpful in the sense that they really dug into their budgets. They really sort of looked line by line and really made sure that they understood what that was and was able to bring back some really good price reductions in their budget overall and made sure that they really understood it. And I think that the key there is if they understand their budget, they're going to be able to then be responsible for their budget going forward. So I just wanted to really acknowledge both Bill and Jill for doing that work and that they really stepped into that important role on the leadership team in helping with the budget. Obviously, with having a directive of a level funding budget, it's always going to be a challenge to move forward, so it's not an easy process. But we really did want to understand what kind of services we needed and what kind of services might we have to look at changing. I think there's also a couple of key things that are happening right now is that as we look forward into the next year, we have a new contract that's in the process of going to be negotiated. And so we had to put into place an understanding of what we expected, you know, to have that sort of money in place to be able to move into the process of sort of going into those negotiations in good faith. So that was sort of built in there as well, even though we don't have that teacher union contract negotiated yet. I think, again, from our perspective, looking through this process, we really do want to and value a couple of key things. And so there was some painful moments in the process where we really do value things like technology, and we want to move our school district as far along as possible with getting technology into each and every student at their hand at all school class levels. But we have to do that incrementally. And so the reduction in technology costs is part of slowing down that process, but it's also still acknowledging that's the direction we want to move in. The diversity work that we've been doing now for three years is going to continue. There is a little bit of price reduction there or budgeting reduction there. And, but that was still very much reviewed at a very deep level to sort of make sure that overall, we were still moving in a direction that still included that as a part of our core work that we're doing, and we'll continue to fund it as best as we can. And so that was, there is a little bit of reduction there, but overall, it's still staying there at the core level of our work, and I think is still being acknowledged in our budget and continue to be funded within our budget. And then lastly, I just wanted to say that the class size piece was definitely a big part of our conversations as well. Whitebrook Middle School needed to add that teacher in, and obviously, that changed the scenarios across the budget. But it was critical to keep our class size lower in the middle school. And so that's why we recognized that we needed to hire a new sixth grade teacher to keep that across the board within the middle school. As those kids age up and through the process, our high school population is reducing, but our middle school is increasing, as Dale already mentioned. So the last thing I just wanted to say also in this process is that we are all living in kind of uncertain times right now. I think we very much understand, even as we're going forward to approve this budget potentially at this process right now, that our budget is intimately linked with the economy, and that's linked with the state and local revenue. And so I think that sort of we know that the challenges we're dealing with right now across the state, and we're trying to meet that as best as we can. So we're going to put forward this budget and approve it as likely anyway, and then be able to move forward with that. We may still have to revisit this in future months as we continue to look at the future of getting back into schools or not and all that kind of thing. So I think that we just need to understand that this is still a moving target, and we're still trying to put forward our best foot possible at this moment. So thank you very much for the time, and I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to this or not.
Thank you, Maren. Does anybody want to speak?
I would like to weigh in real quick if I could.
Yes, please.
I was, I thank my cohort, the Chair of the Subcommittee, for your words. I was hoping you would speak to some of the specifics that we've gone through throughout this process. And I just want to sort of build off of the final idea there, which is something I've thought, I've been thinking a lot about through this process. I'm obviously, you know, we've did a lot of this work before the current state of things really settled in around us. And I feel as if the way that in many ways, things have grinded to a halt just emphasizes what I was thinking. And that is that we have, as humans, I think, a very difficult time ahead of us. And one thing that I've noticed throughout the process from our public officials is that I believe we do have truly an eye to the future in making these decisions. One thing that has been brought up throughout the course of this is the idea that we are not making decisions just here now as ourselves, but for the community long after we have vacated our positions here. And I think that as we consider the hardships that likely will continue to face us as we maybe face a future virus or some other sort of disaster or conflict, that making these hard choices now to be additionally prudent even at the expense of level services will hopefully put us in a position to take a stronger step forward in the future when we finally find ourselves in that moment where growth is once again a viable expectation. Which is all just to say, I've been instructed not to be all doom and gloom here and that I should be inspiring about this. But I think that, I think we're putting ourselves in that position. And I truly hope and believe that by making this decision here tonight, it will allow us to, in the future, provide the financial support that our students and our educators expect of us and deserve. And it's my hope and expectation to continue pushing forward for that when the time comes. So I just wanted to offer those thoughts as we consider this conflicted decision that we are making.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anybody else? Would anybody else like to?
Marissa? I mean, I hate to follow up your attempt at being inspirational with a bit of disappointment, but I do just feel like I want to express that I'm disappointed that we're again seeing a budget that is not meeting all of the needs of the district. And I understand that we are suddenly plunged into a very different world, and we're reevaluating, and we're being cautious and all that. But this level funded budget was put into place before coronavirus hit us all. So it's not like as if this is a response to the crisis. This is a pattern that we have been seeing for multiple years now in a row. And I think it's particularly frustrating to see a loss of paraeducators when we heard from so many teachers who told us specifically that that was something that they were really looking to see in our buildings in order to ensure that all students' needs were met. And I think we are going to see tremendous loss of learning when we do finally return to school this year or next. And that close one-on-one contact will be more important than ever. And then I think it's ironic to be losing dollars in technology when we've been talking about technology is so critical. And now here we are only able to educate students through technology. You know, I have friends in neighboring districts who were able to send every student home the Chromebook, and every student at least had that basic capacity to access some education, and we're not even close to that. So I have, I want to say I have every faith in the careful, good work, good intentioned work that the members of the Subcommittee and the leadership team have done in working within the constraints of the reality of our budget. But I just can't help but take a moment to express that I'm frustrated and disappointed.
Thank you. Anybody else? Lori?
I want to thank you all, all of you on the Subcommittee, the Finance Subcommittee, for all of the hard decisions you've had to make. I appreciate everything you just said, Marissa. And being an educator, working with students through technology now, I have thought constantly about our students in East Hampton that they don't have the faculty that my students have in another district. Each and every one of them have a Chromebook that was given to them by the district. And when we sat in the meetings with the NIAS Committee, that's what came out of it. They said, "You have to work on your technology." And I know we had to make hard decisions, but seeing that in light of everything going on now, it is totally disheartening. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Hi, if I could comment. So I hear dearly all the words sent. And I'll agree with Marissa that the level funded budget and mandate from my office is not something that is all related to a pandemic. It's a fiscal benchmark that I put forward for all the departments, including school. I do think that there are several points and comparisons being made during this discussion, not only the same as last year, but what I unfortunately expect to see going forward, which when you put together a dramatic chart of one data point that you're talking about slim percentage marks like we did with the FY 2017, 2021 public school budget increases, I think that's very myopic. I would like to see that chart going forward, and it would be interesting to see it before the budget process that also includes charter and choice assessment, also includes net school spending, non-net school spending, 32B expenses. I find that having a chart with just one data point is nothing less than a picture. And if I could, you know, and to enlarge it and to make the gaps between points on the X and Y lines so far, it paints a picture, really, not of what the school does not get, but a mismatched perception of what the school can have. So I too am disappointed. Once the amount of the budget is given, there's nothing to say that the leadership team, as well as the superintendent's team, and even the School Committee, can't look at reprioritizing things in our school and our schools and what we have spent and what we will not spend anymore. And maybe that'll happen in the next year. To Jonathan's point, I do think that this is somewhat of a moving target. Without making any promises, but just saying it as a fact, the budget that I am pushing for the city to present on May 6th and to have one passed by June 30th is extremely intentional in this time of uncertainty. The budget I present on May 6th will have very little to do with the pandemic. There's certainly different cash flow points that may be reimbursed by FEMA and MEMA, and I hope some of the school expenses to offset, but that no means is a scratch ticket or a bonus. The June 30th budget is meant to give the city, its departments and residents, a very good idea of where we stand in current fiscal times. And the fallout from this pandemic, and even some of the choices that have been made in this budget, will become more apparent in the fall when free cash is certified. And we'll look at the whole budget again and see where we are. But to compare what an increase is or not and that a department budget that actually has only gone up as a total percent of the budget to 68% last year, and then to be producing a chart that shows one data point with the dramatic drop from 1.76 to 0, I don't know, what kind of story does that tell? I think it's a slanted story, and I'm very disappointed with that. Other than that, I would thank everyone for their time and their efforts, all well-intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else before we vote? No other comments? Okay. Would someone like to make a motion to accept the school budget? Do I hear a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept the budget that has come out of the Finance Subcommittee for the FY 2021 budget.
Okay.
One second.
Thank you, Jonathan. We'll have a roll call vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham.
Aye? You have to say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, we have to hear your vote. It's just a different way to do this. Marissa?
Marissa Carreri, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Maren?
Maren Goldstein, aye.
And Mira LaChapelle?
abstain.
Okay. And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. So the budget passes. Thank you. Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is April session. Dr. Leclerc, do you want to move, talk about that a little bit?
Yes, I'd like to share with you that there's talk from the Department of Education, from the Commissioner specifically, that it was up to school districts to decide whether they wanted to continue work through April break with Patriots Day off, of course, or if they wanted to take the April vacation as planned. It is, the Commissioner has decided it's a local decision. And based on the feedback that I've had from all of our faculty, they would like to continue working through April vacation. Their new learning plan, their new remote learning plan is just going into place this week. And once they get that momentum going, they'd like to keep it up during the April vacation week with the idea with the idea that the commissioner has said, no school will go to class beyond the 181st day of the entire school year. So that will put us out around June 18th, if we return to school, which is still an unknown. So I am bringing it to you this evening that I'd like to recommend that we change the school calendar to that we will be in session the four days of April vacation.
So I just want to weigh in. To me, this is a pretty easy decision. But as a teacher, we did the same thing in our district. We surveyed the teachers to see if we wanted to do this. And everybody unanimously felt that you're just getting these kids ready to, all this remote learning, to stop for a number of days just really seemed inefficient. I don't know how Lori feels about it, but what her experience was. But districts are unanimously voting to work through school April vacation. Lori, did you want to weigh in a little?
I agree with you wholeheartedly. We did the same thing where I teach, and the teachers also agreed. We were given three options, and this option of working throughout the vacation.
Great. Any other discussion? Does someone want to make a motion?
I move we approve that our educators be directed to work through April vacation.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote again. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Okay, thank you. Moving along. We have accounts payable and warrants. So we have, I'm going to let Marissa take over.
Cindy, can you address number three on the agenda, the school calendar for next year?
Yeah.
Thank you. I skipped.
That's okay.
All right. I'm going to let you talk about, back to you, sorry.
Oh, sure. The, well, the school calendar, I think you've seen the draft. I think you reviewed it the last time we had a school committee meeting, which was probably about a month and a half ago now. So now it's just an opportunity to ask questions and vote on it.
I don't have any questions. Does anybody else have anything, any observations or concerns or questions? Calendar? And if not, does someone want to make a motion to approve it?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed calendar for the 21.
Do we have a second?
I'll second, and if I may just ask a quick clarifying question. So when it says draft three, the last time that we saw it was also draft three. There are no changes. And this is just sort of our second go around to finally approve it.
Yes.
Correct.
Sounds good.
Motion has been made and seconded. We're going to start with a roll call. Again, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. Thank you. All right, so thanks for catching that. Next is March 26th, warrants are payable. And I'm going to turn it over to Marissa.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the accounts payable dated March 26, 2020 in the amount of $369,910.58.
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the school payroll dated March 26, 2020 in the amount of $530,784.53.
A second.
Roll call, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. On to April 9th.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable dated April 9th, 2020 in the amount of $14,987.43.
A second.
Oh, Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye.
Okay, finally, I will make a motion to approve the school payroll dated April 9th, 2020 in the amount of $516,111.36.
I second that.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Okay, roll call.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren?
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle?
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski. Excellent. Okay, we have completed all of our necessary business for and do we have a motion to adjourn? Okay, Miren?
I just would like to ask a question while we're on. I mean, so I assume now that we have this technology, are we going to be having subcommittee meetings? Are we going to be getting on track with doing our regular biweekly meetings with this? Just wanted to understand what the availability of this technology was for us to do our other work.
Yeah, that's an excellent question, I think, for the mayor.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, all the other multiple member bodies, you know, from planning to city council, whatnot, are continuing along their schedule using the Zoom technology. I don't know what account we're using right now for Zoom. If it's city council or mayor, you know, we need to figure out an account that school uses. So we can always make sure that you have the technology and you have the license that allows it to record. But I don't see, I think, schedule away. And we can make sure that individual chairs know how to use the software.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to add that I think the, to answer the mayor's question, I believe this account is the same as the city council account, if I understood Ashley correctly, with the same controls and that sort of thing. So I think that it's set up the same way. So we should be all right.
Okay, great.
So we are going to be doing a finance subcommittee quarterly meeting in the next couple of weeks. So I will reach out to the committee members then to try to schedule that time and then also coordinate with the city council to make sure that we can use it at that time that we choose. So.
Yeah.
And I don't have.
Oh, my. We also have a mayor office license, and I believe we have a third license we have not designated. So my recollection was that the third one was for school, for school business. But I'm not, if that doesn't exist, it's supposed, school is going to exist soon. So, Miren, whenever you schedule the meeting, you know, if the city council license is or is not available, certainly the mayor's will. Because we only use the mayor's mostly during the day. It's usually not used after 4:00 so far.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll all touch base and schedule our next meetings and the next scheduled school committee meeting. Does anybody have that off the top of their? We can look back. We don't have to.
The next one is for the 14th. So it'd be next Tuesday is what was on schedule originally.
Okay, that might be, is for 14?
So what, because we moved it up, it would be the 28th, right?
I would think so. The 28th? Okay, so the next scheduled meeting will be April 28th. Okay, that sounds good. All right, then, if we have no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me?
I think Shannon and I both did.
Okay. So Lori made a motion.
Yes, I made a motion.
Who's seconding?
Me, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon. All right, a roll call vote to adjourn. So Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Carrery, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Miren Goldstein, aye.
Mira LaChapelle, aye.
And Cynthia Kuzinski, aye. All right, thank you for doing this. Have a great night, stay safe, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.